...a meeting to order. The closed session item was pulled and will be discussed at the next meeting. So, can I please have a roll call?
Councilmember Matina?
Here.
Councilmember Farlet?
Here.
Councilmember Spur?
Present.
Councilmember Turner?
Here.
And Mayor Barnes?
Here.
And Paul, would you lead us in the pledge?
To the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we'll move on to the acceptance of the agenda. Are there any urgency items?
Is there anyone who needs to, oh wait, do you, okay, is anyone who needs to accept the agenda as opposed to please?
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Consent agenda. The following consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be active upon by the council at one time without any discussion. Any member of the council who wishes to pull an item may do so or any member of the public. Ordinances. Waive the reading except by title of any ordinances under consideration at this meeting. Approve the minutes of the city council regular meeting of February 19, 2019. Approve the warrant register of February 20, uh, 28, 2019. Confirm the continuing existence of a local emergency in the city of Lakeport. Adopt a resolution confirming the existence of a local emergency for the February 2019 storms.
Overlapping.
Overlapping emergencies. Approve event application 2019-005 with staff recommendations for the St. Patrick Day pub crawl. Approve event application 2019-00-006 with staff recommendations for the July 4 Arts and Crafts Fair. Approve event application 2019-007 with staff recommendations for the Taste of Lakeport Event. Approve the application 2019-008 with staff recommendations for the Trick or Treat Main Street Event. Approve event application 2019-009 with staff recommendations for the Dickens Fair. Adopt the resolution accepting construction of the HSIP pavement marking project by Crisp Company and authorize the filing of a notice of completion. Adopt a resolution amending and adopting an updated conflict of interest code. Would any member of council like to pull any of these items? Any member of the public? Alright, then we'll bring it back to council.
Mr. Mayor, I would, uh, lewd to accept the consent agenda as posted.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Public input. Do we have any forms filled out?
No.
Alright. If any of the public would like to come up and speak, you're, you're welcome to about anything that is not already on the agenda. Presentation. Presentation of the business of the quarter by the Lakeport Main Street Association. I know I saw that earlier.
Thank you very much for giving us this time. We would like to present the business of the fourth quarter to Paradise Skate.
Alright.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate all of his help at Dickens.
Way to go, yeah. Presentation, uh, now the presentation on the commission and installation of a proposed Lake Pomo family bronze statue, proposed for the Historic Courthouse Museum Park.
Hello, my name is Les Miller. I'm on the tribal advisory committee for the museums of Lake County. And, um, in 2015, um, we talked with the curator about, um, installing a bronze statue of a Pomo family on the open section opposite the police and fireman statues, the wooden statues. And he thought it was a good idea, but, uh, about four months into it, he left and got another job. So, we got an intermediate to it was, um, Ms. Petrie, um, and she kind of kept the thing going. And then, we finally got a curator who was gonna stay, and, um, Clark McAvie came in and done a wonderful job, um, pushing a grant to the endowments for the humanities back in Washington DC. So, we got that in place and we've raised almost $20,000 here locally, uh, with businesses and tribes. We've got, um, probably about 15,000 more that's gonna come in from two of the other tribes. So, it's going, um, rather well, actually, and, um, I, I'm just so proud of the community, uh, the business who openly talk about this, and, um, what I see it doing is bringing interest to downtown here. When tourists stop at those stop signs, they're gonna take notice of the statues that are there, complements the other statues, and gets them into that museum and gets them into the shops around the area here. So, um, I think it's just a plus for the, um, for all involved, the whole community. And, as I told the tribes, this is a community project. It's for everybody. It's not just a tribal thing. Some of them took it a little hard, but that's the way it is. That's the way I feel. Lakeport, born and raised here, I'm just so proud of my community and so proud of Lake County. And, um, I would like to introduce, uh, Clark McAvie real quick, and Clark, can you come And, um, the Main Street Association has, um, supported this as well as the Arts Council. Mel Town just donated, uh, the tribe just donated 10,000 to Clark.
Uh, just real quick, I won't take any more time. Thank you for allowing us to come and be on your agenda. And, uh, anybody who's individually interested in donating, lcponmostatue.com is our website. We also have a complete, uh, uh, discussion of the project as well as, uh, the grants up there for anybody interested in going through the nuts and bolts of the grants. Again, thank you for your time.
And we will, can we leave this with you?
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, cool. Now, Paul, do you have a presentation for us today?
Uh, sure.
Yeah? Public Works?
Is it them, please?
Yeah.
Are you gonna introduce?
Uh, yeah, I can do Michelle first if you want. Michelle wants, come on up.
Good evening, mayor, council, public. Um, I'd like to introduce at this time, uh, Michelle Humphrey. Uh, Michelle came to us, uh, back on 4/3 of 2017, uh, to assist with the, uh, 2017 flood event. Michelle has been the driving force that, uh, has kept us on track with FEMA and the amount of paperwork that's involved with all the projects that we've had. And she has been our liaison with FEMA and CalOES, and has just done an outstanding job. Uh, when Cindy retired, um, and left the public works department, that left a vacancy as a administrative specialist, um, at that time, I approached Michelle about, uh, if she would be interested in stepping in and taking that position. And, I mean, she'd already been working for us, uh, for so long, she was very familiar with our operations and was just a great fit. And so, she's been carrying on ever since, um, besides doing all of our FEMA, which now we're looking like our third, as we had the floods of 2017, then we had the fire, which we have a FEMA claim in on, and then now we're looking at floods again. So, um, we've already got our initial damage estimates submitted, and so, uh, anyway, Michelle is really the driving force behind a lot of that work that goes on, and I just would really like to give her recognition for all of her hard work and welcome her to the city of Lakeport.
Mr. Mayor, council, I'd like to introduce Mr. Ron Harpster, our new electrical maintenance technician. Um, when, uh, this first job went out for recruitment, we thought it was gonna be very difficult to find someone qualified. Um, there are far few and between qualified candidates out there, and, uh, we came away big with Mr. Harpster. He's got 16 years, um, with the county of Lake, doing exactly what we needed to do. So, he's a perfect fit for operation. He's been doing wonderful, hit the ground running, so welcome him to our team. Okay.
Mayor, council members and members of the public, I wanted to introduce today Luke Steely, who's our newest police volunteer. Luke's actually been a friend of the department for quite a long time, I don't remember exactly how long, but, but, uh, we've been, been friends with him for quite a while, and I knew about it three months ago, or so you came on?
Something like that.
And, and started helping us around the station?
Couple of years.
And, and then we, actually been two years, I think?
Yeah.
So, we finally talked him into officially coming on as a volunteer and getting a uniform, but he does a lot of stuff for us around the station, uh, maintenance. He, he just recently built us a, an inset, uh, display case for a lot of our police antiques that we have, and actually, him and another friend of his, um, wired in an old 1950s red police car length that we have?
Oh, cool.
That we can run by remote control from the lobby. So, that's real nice, and then just a lot of other stuff around the station, and we're happy to have him, so wanted to formally introduce him. So, thanks for coming.
Welcome. That is a beautiful new members. Awesome. Up next, we have, uh, public necess, public convenience or necessity. Consider a determination that public convenience or necessity would be served by the issuance of a type 20 off-sale beer and wine liquor, beer and wine liquor sales license to the Dolan California LLC for the Dollar General at 1450 South Main Street, Lakeport, California, and adopt the proposed resolution.
Just real quickly, mayor and council members, last meeting, I had brought to you, um, the request, uh, from the Dollar General Corporation to receive a, um, finding from the council of public necessity and convenience in order for them to complete an application with ABC to sell, uh, some beer and wine off-sale at that location. Um, so we went through that process and, um, after that hearing, the council directed staff to bring back a resolution, which the community development department handled that portion of it, and I will turn it over to Mr. Ingram if he has any additional information to offer on that resolution that you have in front of you.
Well, thank you, chief. Now, nothing much to add there, just based off the, uh, public testimony that was given and the evidence discussed by the council, uh, following that public meeting, uh, we put together the resolution you have in your packet making, uh, findings in favor of, uh, the public necessity. So, certainly can answer any questions you have regarding any of those findings, but they're all based off that previous discussion from, uh, February, February 19th meeting.
Thank you, Kevin. Is there any questions from council? Alright, we will open it up for public comment.
Good evening, my name is John Sayer, I'm from Lakeport, and since I know how this is gonna go, I'm just gonna say my piece, and generally speaking, what I hope is in two or three years' time, uh, that an honest assessment of, uh, Dollar General is neutral or even possibly positive. If it isn't, I hope someone in city and, and/or county government will become willing to engage in a discussion that does not equate all forms of free enterprise with community betterment. Thank you.
Good evening, again, my name is Steve Rollins, I'm here on behalf of Dollar General. I, I wanted, um, I didn't have a lot to add to my testimony from the other night. I did read the, uh, uh, the resolution and, and we're certainly in agreement with the, uh, the resolution, and obviously I'm available for any questions if anybody has any.
Is there any other community input? Alright, then we will bring it back to council. If there's no further comment, Paul, accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll go ahead and make a motion to make a determination that public convenience or necessity would be served by the issuance of type 20 off-sale beer and wine liquor sales license to Dolan California LLC for the Dollar General at 1450 South Main Street, Lakeport, California, and adopt the proposed resolution.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Utility superintendent, receiving file and update on the wastewater intrusion and infiltration INI project.
Mr. Mayor and the council, um, as you recall, 2017 was quite a year with that flood, and now here we are again, um, a few years later, but it was a good wake-up call for our collection system to really take a look and investigate all the INI issues that we have. Um, so, we, we've been progressing pretty well, and I just thought it'd be a good idea that brings table, show you where we are to date, and go from there. Sorry.
Okay. There we go.
Also, a few months ago, I did introduce Alex Sharp, she's with, um, Civics Park, and, um, she's gonna be with us for a year, and she's been, uh, very, very helpful with this INI project, and so she's gonna be also presenting part of this. Alrighty. Let's see if this works. Nope. Okay. Alright, so to start off, I thought we'd do a 2019 flood update. So, if we take a look at the graph from 2017, um, the, uh, the reservoir level filled up rather quickly. As you see, the, the top line here is the very top of our reservoir, that's overflow. Um, the blue lines is the lake level, and then the orange is the actual reservoir level as it's coming up. Um, during the winter months, we had to store all of the treated wastewater into our reservoir, and then during the summer months, we irrigate to dispose it. Um, in 2017, uh, we got behind the curve with some things that happened along the lakeshore, um, with some trailer parks, and then we were right up against it, so the very end, and then luckily the weather changed and we were able to not overflow, but it was really close. Bringing up to today, um, lake levels coming up, but we were able to stay ahead of it. This is a lot of reaching out, learning lessons from the last flood event, and so, in comparison, we have about nine feet more freeboard in our reservoir, and, um, so we're in much better shape, um, this, this year. Um, so barring any, too many more, uh, atmospheric rivers, um, I think we'll be in pretty good shape. So, factors still leading, leading to more favorable conditions was the Willow Point repairs and monitoring, um, as a result of 2017. Willow Point, uh, basically their sewer system just kind of collapsed, and, um, it was identified that it basically had to be replaced, so they did, uh, a nice job of going in, replacing everything, updating it, and locating all of the cleanouts, and they've been very helpful so far this season to make sure, or this storm event, to make sure that everything's sealed off. Um, we're monitoring it daily, um, as part of the proactive monitoring, as well as the other, uh, things along the lake, uh, other trailer parks. And then, um, also contributing to this is we have done some collection system repairs as a result of what was identified, um, from the 2017 flood. And so, um, the 2017 Promptly Aggressive Program, so since then, we have, uh, added some personnel. We have one utility operator that's dedicated to INI investigation solely. Um, Alex here with Civics Park, uh, to assist with data acquisition and analysis. She's been great with, uh, developing all the spreadsheets, four years' worth of data so far, compiled, so we can do, um, analyze how the trends of lake level and flows are coming through our system, and then we also procured a mainline camera van. Uh, we've also been utilizing flow monitors, uh, for analyzing the flows during storm events. Flow monitors actually sit down into the, uh, actual collector mains at different points, and so, in a storm event, it's normal to go out and pop a manhole lid and take a look and see where the higher flows are coming in, it might be 2:00 in the morning. Flow monitors allow us to do that recorded 24/7, so it gives us a lot of data. And then I'll turn it over to Alex.
Um, yeah, so, I have compiled, um, 2015 through 2018 flow data, which includes what's coming in to the water, wastewater to the plant and what's leaving it, as well as each location throughout the collection system, the flows that they're receiving. Um, and I've also compiled the lake levels throughout these four years and the rainfall. Um, and so, this graph just kind of, um, gives an overview of these four years. The green bars represent the lake level, the blue is rainfall, and then the red is the, um, the influent, the plant. And with all this data, we're able to analyze the trends that are occurring, um, and see the percent change that occurs due to a shift in lake level or rainfall, and, um, we're able to see how the system is going to react based on these shifts that, that occur, as well as, um, pinpoint areas where INI is, um, more of an issue, and also how these things are changing throughout time. Um, so, yeah. And then the flow monitors, we have four that we're using, using right now. Um, like Paul said, you can put them down in the manholes, and as opposed to having just permanent meters in place, these can be moved around to different areas, so you can, you know, study different parts of the flexion system, what's coming in, um, and they are equipped with an AD sensor that uses wave Doppler technology, um, that transmits waves and measures the frequently, frequency shift that, um, that comes and returns signals that's reflected off of air bubbles or particles in the flow. Um, and, yeah, and you can go to the next slide. And, um, they're really easy to use, as you saw on the last slide, um, you just have a pole and you insert them into the pipe, they're different sizes, um, can be used, and they're really great, um, and receive real-time data that's coming in. Right now, we're getting 15-minute interval, intervals, that, you know, you can do it more frequently, less frequently, um, and read what, how much flow's coming in, the rate it's coming in, and so on and so forth, and, um, it's really easy to retrieve that data, it takes about five minutes, and you can also obtain a cellular modem, which can send that data directly to a cellular, or device, um, and that can also be beneficial in alerting, um, you on that device when flows are really high and things like that. And then this is just kind of a glimpse of the graphs that we can create with this data. Um, the, there are four panels representing different sections, um, that these monitors are studying, and this is flow rate. Flow rate is, um, depicted on the lines, and then the bars are the rainfall. So, you can see on the, the fourth panel at the bottom there, that the flow rate is very correlated with the rainfall, um, which is an indication of high INI. Um, so, yeah, and once we have all of this data, there's so much that we can do with it, um, in the care.
Thank you. So, I'll take that over. Um, so I just wanted to give a little glimpse of the camera van that was, uh, we procured, I think it arrived in November, and so, it's been, uh, we've been using it quite frequently, especially look in the background, lake level started coming up. It's the ideal time right now to be monitoring the mains along the, the lakeshore with a high-water table, because you're gonna see the most INI that you could probably get, so, um, and the center picture there is the, uh, is the actual camera that deploys into the main. It's kind of, um, it's, it sends a signal back to the TV monitor and the computer, and we record it, and then as it goes through and we see things happening, we make notes of it, and, um, and then we record, we save that data on, um, CDs, or DVDs, and so, good. And then some of the things that are found, this is some examples of a cracked pipe, um, here, um, as we're going through the, the main, we'll stop and note that, and it gives the footage where it's located, and then we give a little description, and then we start building a list of, of the problematic areas within that main, and over here, we have a little bit of root intrusion at a joint. Okay, so, to date, with the camera van, we've done 4,533 feet, which represents about 3.35% of our collection system. Our target is to be about 20% of the collection system per year, so over a five-year, uh, five-year span, we'll get the whole collection system and then start over every five years and then continue to monitor. Within, um, that footage that we've inspected so far, there's 165, um, uh, needs for repairs. This could be very small to something pretty major, um, but, um, we're definitely identifying some issues out there. We've, uh, inspected 63 laterals, um, that's 2.86% of our total laterals, um, identified 16 repairs needed for those, and, and 19 manholes, um, and then we've identified, uh, five manholes that need some work, um, today. So, moving forward, uh, we're gonna do a continuous, uh, data monitoring. Alex has been instrumental in setting up all of the spreadsheets, and it will be, uh, on a continuous basis, where the years to come, we'll keep adding that data and monitoring it, and then he'll give us, um, all these nice graphs, so we can keep an eye on what's going on. Uh, continue with mainline inspections, and then we're gonna, of course, develop a comprehensive repair list based on our inspections, and so that's gonna get into, uh, um, our next capital budgets. We're gonna kind of prioritize and see what needs to be done as far as slip lines or, uh, point repairs, uh, manhole linings, that kind of stuff. And then, uh, during the spring or summer, we're gonna perform a lot of smoke testing. We have, uh, noticed that, um, during a rain event, there is definitely a correlation, an immediate correlation of intrusion, which, uh, is indicating that we have some illegal connections, something gutters, or somehow it's finding its way into our, our sewer mains. And then, uh, finally, um, around, uh, probably before, sometime before August, we're gonna update our system capacity, and so we're gonna take all this data that we have and model it, uh, after the, uh, 20, uh, 2008, uh, master plan that we have, and do a capacity assessment, let us know how much, uh, capacity we have left as far as, um, sewer connections. And, uh, and finally provide an overall cost analysis related to INI. Once we have all this data, uh, we're establishing a baseline, and then from that baseline, what we wanna do is continuously make improvements, and then we're gonna look at how much it's costing us, um, for all the INI, and, uh, what we can do in savings and also, um, uh, enlarging the capacity. And, any questions?
It just seems to me that, uh, us getting that camera van, uh, has helped tremendously in you finding places that need to be repaired and stuff, and that in itself is going to keep us from hitting the backdoor, which is... And that in itself is going to keep us from hitting the maximum, which is if we get to the maximum, we have very big problems. And so I think that it was well worth the van.
So Paul, the INI, is that predominantly during high rainfall years like we're having in 17 and 19? Or is that something that, some of the stuff is actually stuff that comes in like all year, every year, during, you know, watering? Or how does that work?
No, every year it's present. If you look at the lift stations and you go through a rain event that's like one to two inches, you can start seeing the lift station start cycling a lot more. So even if it's, come on the hills of dry weather and then you get your first good storm, you start seeing it immediately. So that's the intrusion part. We've got to figure out where that water's coming in. Now, the INI is much worse, of course, when the lake level's this high, because it's finding many different areas to come in because of the ground-up cable. And I mean, right now, it's over several sewer cleanouts and manholes and that kind of thing. But we went ahead of that and tried to make sure it was sealed up. And so far, so good. It looks like it's working pretty well.
So when you put your priority list together, being that floods are not as frequent, well, we've been pretty frequent with floods, but being that floods are not as frequent, is your priority list built on the intrusion first? Or is it just based on the size and magnitude of the damage? Or how do you set up your priority list?
Yeah, it's going to be the size and magnitude of the damage and what it can contribute. So anything that's like running right along the lake shore, like let's say Park Street had a big issue, that's going to be the first one, probably have the most intrusion because it's closest to the lake. It's the lowest point. And so that would get priority. Or you see something that's drastically wrong, like a main is collapsing and a lot of water. Well, of course, eventually that's going to collapse and it's going to be a blockage also. So taking all factors in, we'll start prioritizing, probably start replacing some sections of main and then going in and doing point repairs.
Thank you.
We have a.
Quick question.
Yes.
Does the survey of the camera truck extend through all elevations through the city? Or is it just to meet specific elevations?
No, all.
Over elevation.
No, all elevations. The target is to get all of our collector mains inspected. So it'll be going through the city. It's a six-inch enlarger. And so, and like I said, on a five-year cycle is the goal. And so after five years, I'd like to do the entire collection system. And then we do the repairs, and then we start over again, five-year cycles, and then see what's happening and try to stay ahead of it that way.
And this is our truck?
Yes, yes. We were just, yeah. Yep. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Paul. That was a great presentation, both of you. All right, Public Works, Doug. Approve and authorize the city manager to execute a professional services agreement with the chosen engineering firm for the Hartley Street pedestrian improvement project.
Mayor, council members, before you, is a request to authorize the city manager to sign the professional services agreement with Laco. We went through a very extensive advertising program for this engineering contract. Right now, there seems to be a real shortage of engineering firms willing to come up into this area. We advertised this particular one for 10 weeks. Our normal advertisement period is three weeks. But due to low, receiving a very low volume of submittals and an expressed interest by another engineering firm, we extended that out. At the end of that 10 weeks, at the close, we still only had one RFP was submitted. So we went through the normal process. We have a consultant selection committee. They reviewed the proposal. The bidder was deemed responsive. City has negotiated, and their estimate meets with our engineer's estimate. We've gone through a very arduous process with Caltrans, because when you get just one bid, that's problematic. But we believe that we've met all of the requirements and all the steps that we need to go ahead and award this so we can get that project off the ground and get that thing finally moving. It's been a challenge. So we're asking the council to grant the city manager authorization to sign that.
Thank you, Doug.
You're welcome.
Any comment from the council?
Two things. One, can you give us an overview of what this Hartley project's going to entail? I mean, is it going to be sidewalks and?
It basically is from the old Safe Routes program. And so there really is no road improvements. It's all sidewalks.
All sidewalks.
Correct.
Okay. And then reading this documentation, I noticed that you said that these guys are going to help you get everything in line for Caltrans so that Caltrans will approve it. When Caltrans approves it, is that when we get to put in our thing to whoever to give us the money to do this? Or how does that work?
The way that this program is set up, the money is set up in blocks. And they only give you the funds in blocks. So right now, we're in the environmental segment of the project. So we have to get the environmental studies done and completed and submitted to Caltrans and approved by Caltrans before they'll authorize us to proceed with the next step, which is the project engineering. And so once we get all the environmental studies done, ship it to Caltrans, we get their blessing, and they will notify us that we have been authorized to proceed. We have our funding, and then that we'll go ahead and start the actual project engineering. And then it works through a process. So once we get that engineering done, and that all goes back to Caltrans, they review all of that, and then they get back to us and say, you are now authorized to proceed with construction. And at that point in time, that's when we go out to bid and the actual construction begins.
Okay, so what's concerning me is do we front the money upfront until Caltrans says okay? And then Caltrans says okay, and we get the money back? Or how's that money thing work?
We don't spend any money until we have an authorization from Caltrans to proceed. That being said, yes, we, even though they have committed to the funds, we expend the funds and then we send to Caltrans a reimbursement request. So we show them what we spent the money on, how much we spent. And so they then send us those funds that then back to what we had to expand, except for our match portion, which on this project, I believe it's around 10 to 12%.
Okay, that's what I was trying to figure out. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from council? Any questions from the public? All right, back to council.
I will make a motion to move, move to approve the authority of the city manager to execute a professional service agreement with the chosen engineering firm for the Hartley Street pedestrian improvement project.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, council.
City Council Communications. David?
No, no report.
Doug? Anything further?
I think I'd just give you just a really very brief update on flood status and where we're, where we're at with things. I think everybody is very cognizant of the wind that came out of the east today, which is our worst nightmare here. As for, that wind is supposed to continue through at least tomorrow. We were doing pretty good on Library Park until today. We're going to be losing some more real estate, particularly between Third Street and Yacht Club in the bank area. That bank is not very well armored, and so we're going to lose some more ground in that area. Our water walls seem to be hanging in there. It was coming over the top of them today. So it gives you an idea of what kind of waves we had coming into the park. I'm just very thankful that we have those walls up. So they seem to be holding their own. Lake Shore remains closed. When we saw the prediction of this wind, we didn't want to go spend a lot of time and effort on trying to open it back up, because it's all debris that's the issue there right now, when we knew this was going to come in and then fill it all back up again. So after this wind event leaves and it looks like it's, things are going to kind of calm down, we'll go do an assessment of Lake Shore. And if at all possible, we want to open that northbound lane again. So that's a priority with us. We had another issue with a head wall failure on Main Street across from the Sopa Reis Theater between Savings Bank and the Chevron. A large portion of that head wall on that box culvert that Forbes Creek comes through collapsed. We lost a pretty good chunk of ground underneath the sidewalk area. So I've been in contact with Caltrans. That is on the federal highway system. So that's going to be, become an ER project. I've got authorization to go ahead and proceed with emergency repairs to put some riprap in there to protect what's left so we don't lose the northbound lane, which is, it's basically up to you now. And so we're going to be starting on those, actually start putting riprap in on Thursday. We've got a clearance from Fishing Game already for emergency repair. Go ahead and do that. And so I'm going to have staff work overtime this Friday in order to get that completed. Hopefully by the end of business on Friday, we'll have that site secured. And then we'll start the long, arduous process of NEPA, SEQA, and, you know, the design. And it will probably be at least a year and a half before it gets fixed. So that's just a real quick brief. And other than that, we're all fine.
Thanks, Doug.
Nothing to report.
Paul? No report. Alex?
Chief? No report. Dan?
Yeah, just really quickly, just wanted to make everyone aware, if you can take a look at our website, we are going to be having a public meeting coming up here on March 18. We, the city is pursuing a grant funding opportunity through the Prop 68 bond passage last year for parks. We're working with a nonprofit group that's going to assist us in putting together that application, really mainly to move forward with some implementation of some of the elements of our lakefront plan. So we're really excited about that. It's going to have a very large public outreach portion of it. One, two, three, four, about four meetings, the first being on March 18. But if people can't attend that meeting, please, we're looking for their participation on an online survey. And you can get that online or here at City Hall. And we'll also be distributing flyers out at the school. That was very helpful to us when we were doing the lakefront plan. Got a lot of input on that. Please check it out.
Thanks, Doug. Kelly?
No report.
Katie?
No report.
Stacy?
Did you forget to go that way?
No.
Sorry, George. I just go first. We had the lake division meeting over in Ukiah on Friday, and we got to take a tour of their water recycling plant. Was fascinating and gigantic. I don't think we have enough land to do one here. It's that big, but very impressive.
I wanted to thank our Public Works Department and the Police Department for getting ahead of this storm event. You guys were already out checking weak points, checking sensitive areas, pushing things out through social media. And that's huge. That makes a big, big difference. It just shows that all the stuff that we learned from the last flood event, you know, and it helps, I think it helps the public to be receiving messages ahead of time rather than worrying about what's happening out there, you know? So, well done. That was very good. And also I just want to invite people to the second Sunday breakfast at the Lakeport Senior Center this Sunday. I don't know how early it starts. Tina probably knows, but I usually get there around nine or 10. So it's a really good breakfast. There's always somebody interesting to talk to. Thanks, that's all.
Pro Cam?
Yeah, unfortunately, practice makes perfect, but you guys are getting perfect on figuring out where to go. So you've done a good job there. The other thing is, as Stacy said, that we went to the Ukiah on Friday. And it was quite an impressive site, costing $34 million for this one thing that they did. But they're actually using the recycled water for grapes and pears and baseball fields and parks and everything else. And so it was quite an impressive thing, but I don't think we have to report it either.
Thank you, George. I'd just like to take a minute, of course, the Public Works guys, you guys are amazing. You're doing a great job out there. Thank you for what you're doing. And the police as well. I'd also like to congratulate the firefighters on a quick response to Terrace Middle School just a couple days ago. Went in there, made sure the kids were safe, and did a great job doing that. And I felt like they needed a little recognition too. With that, we'll close the meeting. We're going to reconvene from closed session with no reportable action. Kelly, the roll call, please.
Councilmember Matina?
Here.
Councilmember Parlet?
Here.
Councilmember Soper?
Present.
Councilmember Turner?
Here.
And Mayor Barnes?
Present. Kevin, would you lead us in the pledge?
Please pledge after me. (Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Seconds of the agenda or urgency items? Do we have any urgency items?
No, we do.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to accept the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion pass. The consent agenda. The following consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the council at one time without any discussion. Ordinances: waive the reading except by title of any ordinance under consideration at this meeting for either introduction or passage per Government Code Section 36934. Approve the minutes of the city council regular meeting on March 5, 2019. Confirm the continuing existence of local emergency for the Mendocino Complex fire. Confirm the continuing existence of a local emergency for the February 2019 storms. Approve events application 2019-10 with staff recommendations for the 2019 Camp and Shine BW Car Show. Approve event application 2019-11-011 with staff recommendations for the 2019 Child Festival in the Park. Adopt a resolution supporting the 2020 census efforts. Would council like to pull any of these items? Would any of the public like to pull an item from the consent agenda? Bring it back to council.
With that, I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda as written.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion pass. Public presentation, public input. Do we have any forms filled out? May to Harper.
Hello, City Council.
Hi, May.
I'm representing the Delago Homeowners Association as the president. And I've been asked to come and speak to you about our road conditions. And read a letter that I think we, I believe Hillary gave you all a copy of. We also have some of our homeowners here. Those are just some of our homeowners who come, who are concerned. Well, all of them are concerned, but these are the ones who could come. We have 80 homes in our association, which I'm sure you realize is a very large tax base. So I hope you will give this your full consideration in our request. Stayed in March 1st. This is in regards to Via Delago, Montana Vista, Via Del Cabana Street, Mariah Way, and North Main Streets. Honorable City Council members. Honorable City Council members, the past several years, the Delago Homeowners Association homeowners have waited for critical repairs to be done on these streets. For over 40 years, nothing has been done to maintain the city streets running through Delago except pothole filling. Our streets probably serve Lakeport's highest density population neighborhood with its 80 homes. After reporting numerous times that many of the potholes now have eroded to dirt, we have been told by city officials that tax funds have been earmarked for these streets and that we would be in line to receive some relief for these dangerous conditions. So far, the only repairs have been to fill the potholes with loose materials, which disappear within a few days. This leaves our residents back to where we started, facing many conditions that could cause pedestrians to fall, and I'm just going to say have fallen, all of which could be possible lawsuits, which we hope not, but our city's spending a lot of money filling these with materials and spending time with their staff trying to fill the holes. As Delago residents and board members, we petition the city to repair and possibly replace, replace the city streets running through Delago. And I believe you have a copy of that. I just want to add, I walk a lot, I know there's some walkers here. Delago is not just for the people who live in Delago. We have a lot of people who come up from Terrace, all over and pass through Delago to get to Main Street and downtown. So we have a lot of walkers and I have now been finding that if I wear my hiking boots, it's much easier for me to walk through Delago. That's how bad it's gotten. So State Council, we ask you to please put us on a priority on getting our streets fixed. I think we have some other homeowners who would like to say something and I think Tim you'll probably, I mean, they're there for you. That's the list.
I've got more favorites.
Did you have any questions for us? For me?
No.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. So I have Sharon Plotner, Val Schwefler, and Dave Stimmel and Nancy Ruzika on here. We have all, I've, I've read the letter, I think we've all read the letter. We've all read the letter, we're aware of what's contained in that letter. If anybody has anything they'd like to add on top of the information that's already been given to us?
Yes, we do. We have pictures.
Pictures.
So Dave and Sharon, Sharon's a, go ahead.
Wonderful. Go ahead Sharon.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Sharon, I'm the manager of Delago Homeowners Association and I would just like to let you guys know that it's really dangerous in there. We have a lot of senior citizens in our, in our complex. I know that I've tripped and fallen, other people have done the same and I really hate to see this get out of control for you. I brought pictures that I feel that takes a pretty good picture of what the streets are like there. And I encourage any of you to drive through the area and let your cars have what we have every day. So can I submit these to you for you guys to look at? And I appreciate your help. Thank you.
Thank you. Is this Dave?
Yeah, I'm Dave Stimmel. I've owned in Delago for 27 years and one thing I'd like to bring up that I think is of great importance, is all of the streets in Delago are only sidewalked on one side. So we are forced, as in my case, on my side of the street, it is all lawn. So I am forced to cross the street just to walk down the block and that occurs on every street in Delago. We are forced to cross to get to one side of the street and by doing so, sometimes it's at night, there's not sufficient lighting and we're dodging these potholes and it is truly like a minefield. So I think that's one important fact that everybody should consider when they look at the streets and prioritize where we, where we fix these streets. So I'd like to submit these photos also. Thank you.
Thank you. Val?
Hi everybody.
Hi Val.
I just, this is just a satellite view of Delago. It's really enriched Lakeport for a lot of good reasons. We have out of towners that live, that have their summer homes there. We do have seniors, we have a variety of ages. One of the sets of pictures was taken right after the rains, so the water filled the potholes, you couldn't tell how deep they were. And others were yesterday and we're not complaining, we totally appreciate the city staff, but they came in and filled the potholes again and like the letter said, within a couple of days, but asphalt's gone again. So to save the city some money, staff and materials, we know ultimately it's going to be expensive, but those streets are a lot smaller than some of the other neighborhood streets, yet they have high density and more people living there. So I'll submit that too and thank you for hearing us.
Thank you. Nancy Ruzika?
Forty-five years ago, Delago was created as a planned unit development, which means you can get higher densities and offer recreation facilities such as a playground, a large swing pool, clubhouse for community events, a marina and for the community. That was 45 years ago to the highest quality of standards. Good compaction, I mean, this wasn't a cheap job. This was a combination of Raleigh Jeffers, Jeffers pools, Ruzika engineering and DT Crane, a developer from Santa Clara. And Mr. Crane chose to create a home there on the marina for himself and it's the house that Dave Stimmel occupies today. I can only remember two patch jobs in 44 years. Cliff and I were married there and facing the marina 44 years ago and that's where our first home was and then our second home. And, and our old age will probably move back there. I don't know what the solution is because I know although it is the highest density and probably collects the most tax money and I know you don't get all that, but they had two homes for sale for way too long at too low a price for the square footage. And I think part of it, when a realtor comes in there and shows it, it doesn't sell because the streets are so awful. It's like a ghetto. You're going to get more tax money if the values go up. So tell this, the only solution I can think of, let's block it off and create an assessment district and the city pays three fourths to repave it and the residents one and let's block it off to people cutting through there. We let people walk through our marina, we, they walk our streets, their dogs, they're going to trip and fall and sue the city. So please, let's come up with a solution for this and sue. This has been battered around for too many years now. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I have one other item that I wanted to talk about tonight. I've been before you to say please, and I've talked to Doug and he's promised that probably the north city limits on Litcher Boulevard is scheduled to be paved and also parallel drive going to the social security and UPS. And I want to mention again that there's so many jobs over there that's scheduled to be paved by June 1st, let's not forget that please, because we have a lot of jobs there. Do we want those people moving away from our city and those people that work there patronize our restaurants, Kmart and other places of business here and add to our sales tax that we can use on our parks and pave our streets, right? Thank you. And so southbound on Lake Shore Boulevard has been closed, but the travelway was completely clear as of last Thursday morning. I don't know, it's caused a major traffic problem for the schools and they were out there today and I was there at noon and it still wasn't open, so I, Doug had staff.
It's open now.
This afternoon, well, good, thank you. But the next time they have a flood, please let's not wait so long to get it open because families picking up their children at the schools really having difficulty, service of backup on Lake Shore Boulevard. And then the boats coming for the bass tournament, they had to go up over the guy's home in the hill. I have a lot of neighbors that own homes on Lake Shore Boulevard that are bass fishermen and we want to treat those bass fishermen right, they spend a lot of money here. Thank you.
It's on a different matter.
It's on a different matter, absolutely. We can't actually address any of, I, I hope you know it's not on the agenda, we can't address it, we can just take it under advice. So thank you all very much.
Are we on the agenda for next one? No.
We'll be bringing the streets back for discussion during goal setting.
Oh, we have our goal setting meeting on Friday, our yearly goal setting meeting where we sit down and we go through with everybody what the goals for the city are for the upcoming year. So after that, we'll be able to report back on what the council has decided to do goal setting wise and I'm sure some of those will.
I don't think they're clear that we can't make any decisions right now about it.
Yeah, we, we can't make a decision right now about it at all.
We understand.
Yeah.
But we had asked to have it put on the agenda so that we can go further than this, but we weren't and so therefore we're here as for our public, you know, input.
Got you. How would they go about getting put on the agenda?
Well, council, we're going to be talking about with the funding and the streets and then discuss what's available for next year and, and then if need to, we'll bring that back on the agenda.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I, I drove your streets the other day on my motorcycle and my back storms.
Lucky you made it.
Frank.
Hi, my name is Frank Deloso and I live here in Lakeport and I, I live up on 11th Street and have just a little, about five acres up there. I'm here with one of my other neighbors back over here, I don't know if she wants to say anything. And she also has approximately five acres and then I also have a signature on here for one of my other neighbors who has about five acres above me, Phil and Marc, they live above me. And what I'm doing is asking if you guys could consider to amend the current city ordinance on burning within the city limits of Lakeport. Right across the highway from it, you can burn and on my side of the highway, we cannot burn because we are in the city limits of Lakeport. I think one of the things is that it has led to a lot of overgrowth on a lot of the properties. I don't think there's enough green waste bins that we could use to dispose of and keep everything clear on our properties. It's one reason I'm coming to you. So if I would, I'll just read what I wrote here, which was that we're requesting that the current burn ban under city ordinance, and I put this section there and on the page right behind this one here is the city ordinance. Be amended or changed to adopt the Lake County Fire Protection Air Quality Management Agencies residential burn permit qualifications. There are a number of parcels in the incorporated city limits that are well over an acre of land that have been neglected over the years of clearing the brush due to the current ban, burn ban on outside burning. And we believe that looking at current burn ban on outside burning will help improve the safety of the citizens of Lakeport by allowing residents to clear overgrown debris of large parcels that are over an acre and this will prevent buildup of dry vegetation that was grown on these parcels. And so by adopting the current permit for the Lake County Fire Protection Air Quality Management Agencies, we believe that burning outside, burning outside within the incorporated city limits can be done safely and responsibly. Before I even wrote this, I actually did go down to the fire department and spoke to our interim chief, Rick, and actually he was the one who gave me, tried to get some counsel from him because I, I would assume that you guys would ask him what his opinion on the matter would be as well. And so I wanted to be sure when I was presenting to you that he was already on board with. And so he's, he, if you take a look at the, on the third and fourth page, which is the residential burn permit that is put forth by the Lake County Fire Protection Air Quality Management Agencies, the rules on here are actually pretty, pretty strict on there and I do think that if we are able to do this, it would definitely help out in further keeping lots, you know, bigger properties cleared like mine by neighbors and stuff throughout the year a lot easier. And so I don't think we're talking about huge amounts of smoke and burning within the city limits because it would be limited to only very few properties within the city limits. So I wanted to just present that to you, if you take that into consideration, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Do you want to say anything?
Absolutely.
So like Frank said, I'm Erin McNabb, I live at 1211th Street and have a little over five and a half acres. It is rolling hills of gorgeous oaks and we can see the lake from there, it's just beautiful, we love it. We've had it for a little over three years and each year we're very diligent, when I say we, really my husband is really diligent about clearing it and making sure we're protected from fire. So we're out there mowing, we're out there weed eating, but with that said, the rolling oaks, the oak trees are beautiful, but with windstorms, large branches fall. So I would say in the three years we've been there, we've spent approximately $6,500 in, in labor and in truckloads of clearing that stuff because we can't burn it. Not that it's a, I mean, it's a financial hardship, but I feel like if we could just burn, you know, just to help a little extra with the clearing and I feel like with your guys' blessing, that would really just help us, especially if we're, you know, we're really being diligent about being, you know, protecting everyone from the fire or from fire, you know, risks. So, you know, all right, that's it.
Was one thing, we were working with Doug. What's that for? We weren't working with Doug before on that, so it's something that we are, Kevin's been working with Doug to bring something back to you on that.
Wonderful. Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Moving forward to council business. Authorize the city manager to sign change order number one with NG, NGW Services to allow for the completion of the citywide solar and energy efficiency retrofit project. And you Margaret?
I'm actually, Kevin had it.
So you Kevin?
Yep. Mr. Mayor, fellow councilmembers, as your body is no doubt aware, in April of last year, we approved a contract with NG Services to implement some solar projects and some other energy efficiency upgrades citywide. We have made some significant progress on many of these projects. We've completed most of the retrofit of the indoor lighting, which includes this room here at, at most of our city facilities. We've replaced the HVAC units on a lot of our buildings, we're scheduled actually this, this Friday and Saturday to replace the HVAC units here at City Hall, but they've been replaced at the PD Department and at the courtyard. We've also made some good progress on the actual physical solar arrays. If you've looped around by the courtyard, you can see the construction of that solar array. The weather's kind of holding back some of the other ones right now, but they're scheduled to get on track here in May and June. As part of that however, as any large project, we get into little fines and things, we do have a change order in front of you this evening to consider. It consists of three main parts. The first is removing the solar array that was going to be constructed right here at 75 Third Street, right on the other side of the wall here for the City Hall parking lot and replacing that with a significantly larger array at the new city building there at the old B of A site just further down on Main Street. The other piece was, did run into some costs in regards to the removal of trees out at the wastewater treatment plant. And then the third piece is that in our discovery, finding that we had another HVAC unit in need of replacement at the corporation sewer yard. So altogether, those, those change orders amount to increase in 86,900 when we. When we went out for bonds on these, on these projects, we did raise enough money where this change order would still be covered in that original bond offering price. So there wouldn't be in addition of need to pull in any general fund monies or any other fund monies to cover this project at this time. But certainly open to any questions. There's a lot going on here.
I'm going to be the devil's advocate here because to me, trees are not something that you do not see. So if these trees were there when they put in the bid to do this project, how could that be an overrun?
Well, the contract had said that the city was going to remove the trees.
Okay.
So, but we thought the contract said that they were going to remove the trees, but the contract actually said that the city was responsible for removing the trees.
Just a clarification.
Yeah, so.
Because, you know, you see trees. I mean, I can understand if you dig into the dirt and then you find something, but you can see trees. And evidently, it's a mute point because I went out there today and there is no trees.
Yeah, yeah. So they had to, yeah, to remove those. And they are going to give us a much bigger array for the same cost.
That I'm very appreciative of. I never liked it in this parking lot.
Yeah, to help absorb some of that, that difference.
Yeah, and the other thing is, you know, even though the trees were there, why couldn't they have just put them behind the trees? Because then behind the trees, they're facing south.
Well, the other piece that came up is we had to end up moving that array closer to those trees because that area there is still part of, the area that originally was going to be is still within our, what would you call it, Doug? The recharge area for the, and so we determined.
They needed to move over.
They needed to move over closer there, which required more trees to be removed than was originally anticipated.
Okay. I can understand why we're paying for it because it was that way in the contract.
Yes.
I have a question on the solar array. They're moving the one that's in the parking lot next door and putting one in the Bank of America building. What would the possibility of doing both be?
It was going to be, what, it was at $80,000 or?
It would probably be at double what this was. Because I mean, you're looking at, you know, this was, I think, a 36 watt system in place. And so it's probably going to be 50 or 60 grand more at least.
Yeah.
Yeah, it says here that it was a 29 kilowatts. Now it's a 50 kilowatts.
Yeah. So I think he mentioned it was, was going to be, well, even just to upgrade it, it was going to be quite a bit more. So they said they would eat that difference.
By moving it over there.
By moving it over there. But if we did two arrays, then we're talking about probably close to $80,000 for another array.
And there was less savings involved with the City Hall building. It was more of a sort of an aesthetic, you know, kind of showing the city's commitment to green energy here as opposed to now that we have the Bank of America building, there is a significant energy savings there because that's a significantly large building. So I mean, it kind of, it will end up, you know, creating some additional cost savings as well.
I was just looking forward to having a shaded parking place in the summer. You can park a few blocks away. Yeah, right. Fair enough. All right. Any further comment from council? Any comment from the public? Bringing it back to council.
Mr. Mayor, I move to authorize the city manager to sign contract change order number one with NG Services to allow for the completion of the citywide solar and energy efficiency retrofit project.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Software purchase. This is also Kevin.
Yep, you're stuck with me.
All right, buddy.
This is a purchase of a building permitting software program called SmartGov to replace the current building permit software, which is called Blackbear. Unfortunately, much to my building official's chagrin, who's very happy with the performance of Blackbear, it's no longer a supported software unit. And it doesn't, it doesn't support, you know, the future need of being able to issue permits online and other things like that. So we've done quite a bit of review and met with several contractors that offer it. SmartGov actually purchased the Blackbear proprietary software, so there is a lot of continuity there between our records. It should assist with, you know, a smoother transition over there. But it also includes, you know, some of the other portals to, you know, allow, you know, the use of mobile devices and then eventually, you know, work towards being able to issue permits online. It did come in a little bit higher than we originally anticipated and that's why I have the request here this evening for the permission to have the city manager enter into a licensing agreement for it.
Thank you, Kevin. Yeah, right. I like the fact that you guys did your research and found another system that's, that will take what we already have and easily port it in, sounds like.
Is that true? I mean, will the data be easily moved from the Blackbear into this thing? Is how they bought Blackbear?
In the 30-day demo that we were provided, they did integrate a large portion of it and it was, it was all there. And they also, we have a significant amount of legacy data as well that's currently not integrated in Blackbear. And they've been able to take some of that, too. And it's not as usable as the stuff that comes directly out of Blackbear, but it's certainly better than what we've got right now in the form of paper records. So it will be, it'll be a significant improvement.
And was this kind of the only company that we were looking at because they did buy Blackbear or did we look at other companies and find out?
No, we did. And in fact, two or three years ago, we were actually in contract with another group called EnterGov and started doing the transition with them and it just, it wasn't working. And then so we kind of stopped and pulled the plug there and then reached out to a number of different firms. And SmartGov by far was the best one as far as, in our opinion, of integrating the existing future, which, which we don't have any problems with. It's just no longer a support.
Right, we need that. Do we know of other cities or counties or whatever that is using them and have we talked to them?
Yes, the city of Clear Lake is, and then also Jeff in RIT is very familiar with that process. So he works on their system as well, so we've reached out to them. And then I forget who the other city, another local city is, but we have our building officials talked to them. And we actually did a field trip over to the city of Clear Lake to see how it works and how permits get entered into the system.
Well, it's good that they have it, too, due to the fact that you need to send somebody up here and he's got to fix theirs and ours. It saves them money, so they're faster to come up here type of thing. That's good. I did read something that was kind of strange at the end of all this and it had to do with going to their classes in North Carolina. Did you read that? Did you guys get to go to their classes in North Carolina?
I think they have their training things out there, but they will be sending someone out to us and then I think, you know, there's some webinar, you know, sort of things. But yeah, no, I don't think it's our intent to send them to North Carolina.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. Kevin, is it a type of a budgeted item that has yes and no marked?
On fiscal impact.
Yeah.
Is it?
It is partially budgeted, yes, and then the rest of it comes.
It's partially.
Yeah, but it, no, it's all in the budget. So no, no shouldn't be checked.
Okay, that's what I was interested in.
Yeah, I was kind of wondering about that.
Anything else from council? Anything from the public? All right, bringing it back to council.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of SmartGov permit tracking software and authorize the city manager to sign a licensing agreement with Dude Solutions.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Council Communications, Stacy? No, no. Margaret?
Yeah, nothing.
Okay, David?
No report. Doug? I can just give you a quick update on flood stuff. Lake Shore is open in both directions now. We got the southbound lane open today. The Fifth Street parking lot and ramp area is also open now. And so as the water keeps receding, we're opening more and more areas. One area that is going to be probably behind, particularly if we keep getting rain events, is going to be opening Library Park. And you're probably going to start getting a lot of questions about that. So I can explain to you very quickly what the main problem is and the reason there is, is that the ground is so saturated right now that people are actually destroying the grass by walking on it. If you take a second and look out by the gazebo, you'll see a very muddy trail where people are skirting, the flood, you know, the floodwaters are still there, walking on the grass. And so it's just pumping all the mud up and stomping all the grass under the mud. And so between that and we had lake water contamination in the playgrounds. And so once you have lake water contamination, then you have to treat that as being contaminated. Lot of bad stuff in floodwaters. Yeah, just do a Google on dangers in floodwaters and it's a real eye opener. So being very cognizant of that, we are trying to streamline the process to replace the chips in the playgrounds again. That is a top priority with us. We think we have a strategy to accomplish that, but we still, the main, big playground actually still has a foot of water in it. So, you know, until all the water is gone and we can get a contractor in there to remove all those chips and get the new ones put in, it's going to be a day, it's going to be a little while. Our goal is to have it opened by Memorial Weekend.
We're also going to do a social media blast on, as Doug just told us, so the community is aware of why and when things are happening.
That water that's still in the playground, that's coming from below, correct? That's not water we could just pump out and have on?
Right. It's pretty much lake level. And so hopefully with a sheet pile wall, when we get that in, might reduce that. We really won't know until we get it in. But right now, there's nothing, you know, our wall is so deterior, you know, is destroyed, so the water's coming right in.
The wall's under engineering right now. There's, you know, the engineering, but nobody's on it.
So hopefully a sheet pile might curtail some of that basically flow from under the ground. It's what our hope is.
Thank you, Doug.
You're welcome.
So did we ever think about asking the Channel Cast to use the playground as a practice service? Okay, never mind.
Nick?
Yeah, just really quickly, we look forward to seeing everybody at the goal setting session on Friday. And the new website went live. So if you haven't had a chance to take a look, please take a look and let me or any other.
It looks awesome.
Yeah, we look forward to comments, comments back, that's all.
Thank you, Keith. No report, thank you. Kevin, anything else?
Yeah, just really quickly, we had a community meeting last night, the first meeting for Prop 68, potential grant application. And we had, we had a full house in here. We had over 40 folks in here and it was a great continuation. A lot of people had familiarity with the work that we've done on the lakefront plan. So I think our grant organizers were very impressed with our turnout. The next meeting, which will be also a fun one, kind of getting to see how many things we can fit in there with the money that's available, is on Thursday, April 18th. And it'll also be here at city councils, the city council chambers as well.
Thank you, Kevin. Kenny?
Stacy?
Uh, tomorrow is Blackgo here at 9:30.
Libra?
March is March for Meals, or Meals on Wheels, and.
Oh, yeah, I agree.
Okay, on the 27th.
28. 27. 28 is 28. Meals for Mayor's for Meal?
Oh, no, I have it on Wednesday, the 27th. Is the Mayor's for Meals 2019. And luckily, they'll let more than just the Mayor's go. At the Lakeport Senior Center from 9 to 11 in the morning, we'll get to go watch their daily routine of preparing, packaging, and routing 350 meals that are served throughout the northern part of Lake County in 18 different routes. So I'm really looking forward to being impressed by that amazing daily.
We might be here.
Well, we don't fly out till later. We can talk about that. Anyway, it's going to be a really great, great event. And it's, what's more important is that it goes on every single day. And it's a daily well check that a lot of our seniors get. So this is an astounding level of service.
They do a great job.
Yeah.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Libra. Card Town?
Next Thursday and Friday, they're got the policy committee meetings for Legacy Cities and they'll be going for that, so that's about it. Oh, one more thing. I just thought of this. I got to sit into the Main Street Association meeting for a very short period of time, but today. And one thing that you may be seeing in the near future is an announcement that Oktoberfest is not going to happen this year.
Why?
The council chamber is not putting it on.
Oh.
That's something we'll probably see some in the news.
But tomorrow.
Actually, they're looking into doing a event in July instead of the Oktoberfest. And no, it's not July Fest.
July Fest. Okay, thank you. And I have no report, so we will adjourn the meeting.